It is January 30th, 2019. We definitely have a forum. Thank you for everyone for coming out on this snowy and cold night. Any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. Again, welcome. We do have one new member, Howard DeMyers. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, where is Howard from?
Grand Isle.
Grand Isle. We'll go through introductions. I'll go this way.
Captain Mitchell, staff.
Bob Yermin, South Arrow.
Lance Skangus, St. Albans City.
Yvonne Danderan, Franklin.
Leo Spears, Swanton Village.
Elizabeth Nance, Swanton Village.
Sherry Corden, North Hero.
Richard Noel, Huggie.
Joe Farnham, from South Hero.
Brad Doja, from Fairfax.
Holly D. Fairfax.
Barclay Morris, Grand Isle.
Howard DeMyers, Grand Isle.
Rowena Brown, Richford.
Bob Johnson, St. Albans Town.
Albo Jelsey, Albans Town.
Bill Irwin, Bakersfield.
Chico Martin, North Hero.
Sean Cohen, staff.
Leonard Sharon, Ennisburg Village.
Lord Rico Fletcher.
And I'm Kirk Waite, from Georgia. And you ladies are?
Cool. Ah. I'm Amy Brewer. I'll introduce myself a little bit more when I do present.
I'm Beth Crane.
And I'm Crystal Lightman.
Opportunity for a public comment. Would anybody like to offer anything on that agenda item? Minutes of October and December 2018 minutes.
Are we approving both of them at the same time?
We can take them one at a time. Let's start with October.
I'll make the motion to approve the October minutes as three.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
A fang.
Motion carries. December 2018 meeting.
Would accept the minutes as second?
Second?
Okay.
The motion is second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
So line item number nine, I guess, on the second page. This would be page three. Is that a review of NRPC's accomplishments in 2019 or is that 2018?
2018.
I always get the fiscal year.
Yes.
Good catch. Looks like the correction on the typo. Anything else?
Well, since we're doing typos, Kirk.
Sure.
On page two, line 28. Museum and donated are misspelled, both of them. Sorry.
Correct.
Anything else? Glad we know that I did not take minutes.
Are you still willing to go forward with your motion in second with those changes?
Yes.
Yes?
That's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
A fang.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda are guests. Beth Crane, from Franklin County Carrying Communities, and Amy Brewer, from Northwest Medical Center.
And Crystal, who I didn't know was coming.
And Crystal as well.
Have anybody mind if I adjusted the lights a little bit so that maybe that's easier to see? If I can. Okay. Okay, so thank you so much for inviting us to come speak to you tonight. Very short, so, um, fine. So my name is Amy Brewer. I coordinate the Franklin Grand Isle Tobacco Prevention Coalition. I'm also the health educator here at the hospital. And Beth?
I'm Beth Crane, and I'm with Franklin County Carrying Communities. Amy and I work closely together, and we also work with Crystal, who's passing out.
Well, we want to, yeah, what we want to share with you tonight, we'll try to be speedy. I'll talk really, really fast, is last year, about a year ago, we went into every single retailer, tobacco licensee in the region of Franklin Grand Isle that allowed us to come in and looked at all the alcohol and tobacco products, prices, advertisements. And the reason we did that, because it generally wasn't for fun, the reason we did that was to really understand what our youth see in those spaces and how that impacts their use of alcohol and tobacco. We also looked at food products, and that's kind of a separate issue which we're not going to talk about tonight.
We should add that alcohol licensees were.
Sorry, yes. Yep. And so, yes.
Did you also look at vaping?
Yes. I will answer any vaping question you have, and it's all I talk about these days. So what we know pretty confidently is that there's evidence that consistently and coherently points to the intentional marketing of tobacco products to use as being a cause of youth tobacco use. So what that means is the amount of product and advertisement youth see, whether it's alcohol or tobacco, influences their use. So this is, we weren't alone. We did this in Franklin Grand Isle, but there were sister coalitions throughout the state that were doing this. So Vermont was really lucky to gather this data on almost 1,000 retailers in our region. We attempted to go, we had about 100 retailers that we attempted to go to. We were able to complete 89 visits in the winter. It was fun. And that ranges from, you know, the 23 stores that are here in St. Albans. Ethan Fletcher has a store. You know, we went to just about every community. Okay, so what we did is, do you want to jump in? So we looked at the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which is a survey administered to all students grade six through 12 statewide. And we began to look at noticeable trends within that data. And you'll see the upward trends where the red arrows are. So we have 30-day alcohol use. We have 30-day binge alcohol use. Meaning have they binged in the past 30 days. Right, binge is five or more drinks per person. So you'll see upward trends in both of those particular uses. And then we've stayed, luckily, we've gone down in 30-day combustible tobacco use. We've stayed pretty stagnant with any tobacco use, 30-day any tobacco use. And then, let's see, flavored tobacco was a new question, and 30-day smokeless use, so the vaping, juuling that you were talking about, that's a new question for the 2017 survey. So it's a really, really busy slide, so forgive us, but what we wanted you to see is that when you break it down by high school region, there are certain trends. Alcohol use is going up, and although cigarette use is going down, we're not sure where the others are going because they were new questions. And you'll notice that the trend is across the board, so it's all of the high schools around the county.
And you'll also notice that Franklin Northeast has seen some really significant increases that are concerning to us.
Marijuana use?
That is also part of the survey, but because we were visiting tobacco and alcohol licensees, we did not include that data, but we would be happy to share that data with you if you'd like.
And it has actually, we have seen some increases in our county. It's been a fairly steady 20% use rate over at least 10 years, I'd say, but a little bit of an increase in the past Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which is now two years ago.
Two years ago. And so the next survey will be happening, actually, in February of this year. So we expect that we'll have some additional data, especially around cannabis use now that it is legal recreationally. Yes.
Just out of curiosity, how confident are you of the accuracy of the surveys?
You know, that's a really good question. So for this data, I'm really confident. This is a survey that they do nationally. We do it every two years here in the state. And you do, of course, get the kiddos who just play with the answers, but generally speaking, kids are fairly forthcoming. It's anonymous, and so the data is really reliable. Because every student in just about every school takes it, they have a really big sample size, so it counts for the, you know, those kids that want to just color the lines in the picture. So the only one I'm not confident in, explain why, is the e-cigarette use. That was asked two years ago before Juul came on the scene, and we really expect things to have changed since then. So we'll have, that's been added, that word has been added to the surveys, we'll have better data. So that's the only one I'm not confident in. We do know anecdotally from students talking to us that it is a problem that students consider quite a big issue in their high schools.
The biggest difference between Juul and vaping?
Sure. Vaping is a broad category, also called e-cigarette or electronic device, and it is just a non-combustible heated way of using a nicotine-containing product, generally speaking, a nicotine-containing product. Juul is a brand name, kind of like Kleenex to tissues, right? And for those that don't know what a Juul looks like, it looks like a very small USB device, so it's easily concealed. Some parents may not even know what it is if they see their child with it.
I don't know if you mentioned, but the next YRBS survey will be administered in February in most, in all of our high schools. For people in Grand Isle County, the data for high schoolers is compiled from the different receiving schools.
Okay, so, so in 2009, the FDA banned the sale of flavored cigarettes, except for menthol is a whole other issue itself, because they were shown to appeal to youth, which would have been great if it actually would have solved the flavored product, right? We know kids are really attracted to those really fun and fruity flavors. But what we find is that now that there's not flavored cigarettes, there's flavored everything else. So here's some of the data that we found. So of the 98% of the stores that sold cigarrillos, those are little cigars, Swisher Sweets or whatever, 92% of them sold flavored. Of the 87% of stores that sold smokeless tobacco, chew and dip, 96% of them sold flavored. Of the 47% of the stores that sold some sort of electronic or vaping device, 98% of them were flavored. And of the 94% of the stores that sold alcohol, 95% of them had those flavored twisted teas. We call them Alcopops, but they're twisted teas or hard sodas or whatever. So now there's no flavored cigarettes, but there's flavored, fun, fruity, everything else. You guys know I'll just keep going until you finish. So, okay, so flavored alcohol, this is really surprising. We did this survey, we went around to all these retailers in 2014, 2015, and again, a year ago, what we noticed, and it's kind of hard to see, but those top lines is 100%. And so a lot of those stores are, 100% of them are selling hard tea, hard lemonades, hard soda, supersized. In other words, we went into some of the stores in your communities that you think are about to close, and they still had flavored alcohol products. So if you can imagine, you know, that store that you just can't believe is open anymore, they had a full stack of flavored alcohol products.
Amy doesn't have any particular store in mind.
I have not.
So one of the other things that we wanted to look at, in addition to what the products were that were being sold, was how close were those places, how close were those retailers to our schools? And it makes it look as if Ennisburg got the prize, but within 100 feet of the high school.
1,000 feet.
1,000 feet, sorry, 1,000 feet of the high school, just feels like 100 feet, are four outlets, so selling alcohol and tobacco in Ennisburg. BFA St. Albans has one, and then we also looked at moving out a little bit further, half-mile. So there are 12 within a half-mile of BFA St. Albans, which is obviously a highly, a very dense neighborhood. Three within half-mile of MBU, five within half-mile of Richford High, and five within a half-mile of Ennisburg High School.
So anytime you think our communities are really rural, think that your students are in this area, where within a half-mile they're getting to four, five, 12 retailers that are selling and promoting alcohol and tobacco within their daily lives. And we ask that you keep in mind that this is just showing the data for the high schools. A lot of the elementary schools fall within the same radiuses. So we actually took students with us out doing, collecting this data. So a couple of girls from Swanton joined us from the Health Project and went out and collected the data, and they noticed that, you know, their routes to school were passing by many of these alcohol and tobacco retailers. So actually, we're going to talk a little bit about how advertising influences youth. I said it kind of in the beginning, but then we got a little bit more data. It's not there. So, sorry, I chucked the gun. So lots of the research says advertising influences youth use. I know it feels like a leap for a lot of people to believe that, but what happens is you see these products from the time to very little. They see the products, they see the images, they see the ads. Those ads are designed to kind of create certain connections, or images, or feelings or emotions, and youth just spend their early years and their growing years just seeing that and absorbing it. When you go into a convenience store, if you're anything like me, you go in, I gotta get the milk, I go in, I get the milk, I buy the milk, I'm out of there. A kid, I have a six-year-old and a nine-year-old, when they go into a store, they see everything. They don't have a filter. They're taking it all in, and they're doing it from a very young age. So the things that we're filtering out, because we're busy, we're on a mission to get the milk and get home, I get a lot of milk, the kids are seeing it all. And it doesn't mean that they see it and then go and make that decision to go buy it. It's just becoming part of what they think is normal around them, and it influences their choices later.
And as you probably know, that stores do set up, or marketers set up, products in stores with that in mind. They know who's looking for what and where they're likely to see something and where they're likely to grab something for purchase. So it's all, it's designed with that in mind and with those young eyes in mind as well.
And so while we're talking about advertising, these are a few pictures that we took. There are three different stores. So the top left is a store and kind of outdoor advertising in the store. The middle one on the top is one store. The bottom two pictures are from one store that's just both sides of the door. And the bottom one had nine different advertisements, and that was really close to a high school. The top one has, I don't know, about six or seven advertising, mostly alcohol. That can actually be seen from inside a high school, which means if you're in the classroom facing that, you're seeing illuminated alcohol ads during your class. And then the outdoor ads, which are rare, somewhat rare in our region. This is a stellar example of, they currently have, this is a couple of years ago, they currently have six, seven ads out there in a really busy area. So these are boring slides, so I'm going to walk you through them really, really fast. What we found is what we compared, the data that we collected at the retail environment with the data from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, you know, that kind of crazy slide that we showed you with all those different bar graphs, what we saw when we compared them is that the likelihood of a student to have used alcohol in the past 30 days was higher if there were outside ads for alcohol, 48% versus 30, so a big difference, or if there were illuminated ads. They were more likely to report binge alcohol use if there were any inside ads, ads within three feet of the floor. Do you know why we pick on three feet of the floor? This is about, what, three feet? There's a counter height. Why do we care about three feet?
With kids.
Right, because my six-year-old, she's eye level, and four-year-olds and two-year-olds, those are eye level. And so that's the main reason why companies put them down there, because they're seeing those images at a really early age. So binge alcohol use was higher if there were ads below three feet, ads near the checkout area, floor displays, or ads outside, kind of like I showed you on the pole or the gas station or something. We should also note that while we were doing the assessments, we took notes on things like if advertisements were beside candy or snacks that kids would often reach for, granola bars, those types of things. We also measured how far away alcohol products were from things like juice and water, things that kids may be going into a convenience store for. Tobacco use was higher, report use of 30-day, sorry, use in the past 30 days was higher if the products were within 12 inches of foot of any youth products, candy. Those e-cigarettes are frequently sitting on the counter next to the candy or the gun, frequently, if there were ads for flavored tobacco products within 12 inches of youth products. And that's 30-day any tobacco use. So cigarette use was higher if the products were, again, near youth products or flavored products were near youth products. And then smokeless use was higher if the products were near youth products, if there were ads within three feet of the floor, if they were outside, ads for flavored tobacco products, if there were cigars sold, if there were e-cigarettes sold. So in other words, what you can see is the more advertising kids are surrounded by, there's a connection with how much they're using. One is not necessarily causing the other, not saying that in our region, that's exactly what's happening, but you're seeing an influence. And then they were more likely to use flavored products, again, pretty much the same as the previous slide. Yes.
So you're comparing where they have these advertising to other areas where they don't have these advertising, or they don't have these kinds of characteristics.
Yes.
That they're advertising. Are there numbers as to how many total places, you had a number there of 102, I think, earlier?
Yep.
That are practicing these behaviors? If it's like, you know, a small fraction of 102 that tells us that it's a problem that could be focused on and maybe dealt with effectively, where if it's most of them, then it's a bigger problem?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
So what happened is we gathered a lot of data, and digesting it in a really meaningful way is somewhat of a challenge. It's not my skill set. But yeah, so what we did is, again, this is by high school region, we looked at how many had outside ads. And really, the big lines here are inside alcohol ads, there's a ton of them. When you think about it, it's not just the illuminated signs on the outside, but there's cooler ads. And sometimes there's one or two, and sometimes they're floor to ceiling. So alcohol ads were more prominent than tobacco ads. And so you can see that the light blue is alcohol ads inside, purple is illuminated alcohol ads, a fair amount of alcohol ads on the doors. So it's much more prevalent to see alcohol ads than tobacco than they were there. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, it does, and Ennisburg really stands out.
Ennisburg stands out. And you can't separate Ennisburg and Richford's youth risk data because they are one supervisory union, so their data gets lumped, but their rates are higher, as we mentioned earlier.
You also had another one that stated that Ennisburg had four outlets within 1,000 feet, but the other.
It's definitely dense, it is one of the more dense areas in our region.
Yeah, the more outlets closer to the school, the higher the rate.
Yep.
Right, and as you know, students are going in for snacks and all kinds of things before and after school, so they get plenty of exposure using, just using those stores the way most of us do, right around where they're at school.
Yes.
So are you sharing this with the municipalities and?
We're starting with you guys. Yes, it is the municipalities that we are hoping to get to, because I'm going to try to speed through some of the next couple of slides because I wanted to get to. So what this is, is kind of a problem, but we don't want to leave without kind of offering some potential solutions. So I think there are some things that municipalities in particular can do. So thank you for setting that up. Do you mind if I scoot her, because I don't want to take up your whole meeting time, and it's winter. So there's some variation in product pricing, you know, but not much. This is cigarette, specific kind of menthol, cigarettes, e-cigarettes, and butt lights. There's some variation. It'd take one second just to say that part of the normalization of alcohol occurs in recreation.
Right, so it's not just about retailers. What we're seeing, and this is just a snapshot from a pretty short period of time, and we picked on the messenger quite a bit, but what we're seeing now is more and more, and we have a craft beer economy, we have a craft artillery, we have a lot of economic activity around alcohol and, right now, and potentially marijuana down the line. So what's happening is that we're finding that a lot of events are paired with alcohol consumption. So, you know, and a lot of these things are things like races, foot races, or cycling, so bike races, fundraisers, the half marathon, which is, pictures a young woman running with her, I think maybe with her dad, family barbecue combined with a cash bar at a winter activity. So this is further normalizing the pairing of alcohol with pretty much anything that's fun. So you have a fun event, it's more fun if you add alcohol. And this is something that has come up as an issue with parents who are trying to find fun activities for their family that are alcohol-free, for example. So what we're, part of what we're doing is working with rec departments and municipalities to have that conversation around which activities does it seem reasonable to include alcohol in, and which activities are better left as alcohol-free. And we're not just talking about kids. We've under 21, obviously, can't participate in the alcohol component of this. We have pregnant women and people with chemical dependency who are in recovery or trying to be in recovery. There are a lot of people who are, end up being excluded from the full, you know, the full enjoyment of an activity because of their situation. And so it's just a question of thinking inclusively about people in our communities and how and when alcohol should be a part of those activities.
So I'm going to skip around, talk a little bit about emerging challenges. This is one of them. Electronic cigarettes is a whole other lifetime of challenges, but it also contains crossover with marijuana or cannabis use. Legalization of cannabis muddies the water for all of this, bless you. And then we're also seeing, listening to state regulations, regulations about where alcohol can be sold, so it's, you know, not just a traditional restaurant bar, but it's also at the salon or various other places. So what do we do about it? Kind of that's why we're here, that's why we want to share this with you and with municipalities, right? Because there are things that municipalities can do, but it's not the really easy, fun stuff of like, let's just ban smoking inside, we already did that. This gets a little bit more complicated. So we showed you that map of how dense our communities are with the retailers. One of the options that a municipality might do is make some licensing density changes. So we don't, we want to limit the amount of licenses we have, or we don't want any, we want, you know, X number per thousand or whatever, that's not my area of expertise, but we could take density changes. A municipality could create buffer zones around schools, and it could be a licensed buffer zone, but it could be an advertising buffer zone so that kids aren't sitting in their classrooms receiving alcohol, tobacco ads all over there. They could do content-neutral sign restrictions. Some communities in Vermont and elsewhere say perhaps no more than 30% of window space could be taken up by advertising, or we don't want any on telephone poles. So a municipality could do something like that. And again, it would kind of reduce the advertising to kids. You would make it content-neutral, so you're not getting any First Amendment challenges. And then there's point-of-sale advertising and product placement reduction. You could do all kinds of things about, the state could say, no more e-cigarettes on the counter, they have to go back. You can't have them next to candy, that's not fair. So those are all options. The state could enact a flavor ban, saying no more flavored, candy-flavored products, which we showed are really attractive to kids. Hours of operation changes, tobacco 21. We do skills. We do skills-based parenting, we could do more of it to help parents support their kids in making healthier decisions. We could do a better job with curriculum in schools, support that better, and really strong local leadership, people who keep talking about it and raising awareness.
Amy?
Yes?
So these are youth, they're not legally able to purchase--
I know, isn't that funny?
So--
So how are they getting it?
Yes, I guess that's the question.
So I took a group of, or we took a group of students last year to Washington DC for a Community Anti-Drug Colusions of America conference, and while we were there, some students actually started telling Senator Leahy about the ease of access for electronic devices. They can buy a gift card at the Pennerfords or Price Shopper, like a Visa gift card, as long as they have a physical address to send it to. They simply check a box on the website that says they're 18, and they can order those products. Older siblings buy, parents unfortunately are buying for their children, and those children often are remarketing them within the school, so they're selling them to other students.
That can love them, too.
Yeah. What we're finding with the vaping products and the juuling, they're really entrepreneurial. They have figured it all out. Social media helps, the internet helps. Cigarettes are banned from buying online, you can't buy those online, the same is not true for the e-products. But unfortunately, the prices of them make them easily accessible for kids. The cost of one Juul pod, or Juice Pod, as it's called, is about-- About $4, do you want me to say? $7. $7. So you can buy a Juul pod for less than you can buy an album on iTunes. You can buy the entire starter kit with the device and four Juice Pods for less than a pair of Nikes.
Well, it's interesting, they call them Juice Pods, too.
Yes, yes. It's all interesting. So I want to be quiet, because that doesn't happen very often, and let you talk a little bit about some of the local initiatives. One of you.
Well, we'll start with the one that Crystal just passed around, and we've been working with NRPC over the past year or so on the development of a guide to help municipalities make some determinations about how they want to address issues in their communities. And as Amy pointed out, when she went through kind of a laundry list of some things that could be done, there are some things that are, you know, best done nationally, some things best done at the state level, and many things that can be done at the local level. So we definitely want to encourage people to have a look at that, share it with other decision-makers in your community. It's available online, as well as in the pre-copy that we passed around. We are also working with our Department of Liquor Control to identify people who are passing their compliance tests, which occur maybe annually, and who are attending trainings or sending their sellers to, and servers to trainings. So, and we are reaching out with some positive reinforcement for doing the right thing on that score. We also go into DLC trainings and talk to them and talk about our missions and support them with materials, information about establishing policies within a retail establishment so that there are clear guidelines, in addition to, of course, following the law, for how to maybe see when somebody is purchasing for an underage person, for example.
You will see in the guide as well, a couple of retailers that we highlighted that are doing a really great job of helping to keep you safe.
So we mentioned ad restrictions on policy and time, place, and manner restrictions, and so working with our decision-makers throughout the counties to identify those opportunities. And then you may be familiar with Rise Vermont, which is doing a lot of work to support healthier communities. So just promoting the idea of wellness in a broad way, beyond substances, contributes to a healthier community and better choices. And then, again, working with organizations to change policies or to support healthier norms. We're embarking, we're working right now with Kathy La Boy and other partners in the community to promote something called E-Checkup, which is a way for employers to support their employees to assess their own substance use. It's completely confidential, but gives them a chance to go through and get a sense of their own use patterns and what things they might want to do to change their behaviors. Let's see. And so, again, educating through media, through letters to the editor, op-ends, and social media. And then we do work closely with our local law enforcement around compliance and around underage drinking prevention. And then there's you. You will carry some of this back to others in your communities.
So that's a super speedy, yes. Yeah. Two questions.
All right.
So there are two bills going through legislature on vaping and taxing, marijuana and taxing. Are people taking this message to the legislature to take that opportunity that when those bills go through, maybe some of these prevention ideas get in there, too?
Yes, absolutely. I was at the legislative breakfast on Monday, talking to our elected officials, talking about that. Yeah.
Okay.
That was going to be your question, too?
Picking battles, you know, as a parent and whatnot, people, youth and whatnot, can you say that any one of these are better or less harmful health-wise or addictive-wise? Is there one that you'd rather see your son or daughter with, other than something else?
That is an unfair question. So the answer is, so here's what I tell kids. Cigarettes are the most dangerous thing you can do to your body. It kills one in three people who ever try it. It is the number-one cause of preventable death and disease, right? Cigarettes are the worst that you can do. You can compare all the rest to it, and it's all going to look, you know, like rainbows and unicorns compared to cigarettes. That doesn't mean that there isn't major health impacts from the others. So nicotine in any form is extremely addictive. What we're finding is kids are using the vaping products, which may prove to be less deadly than cigarettes, but very addictive done the same, nonetheless. And so what we may find is youth using them and then transitioning to cigarette use in the future. Or 50 years down the line, we may go, oh, no, they're really, they really are harmful. We just don't have 50 years of data for that. And what we're finding is for kids, you know, with a developing brain, whether it's marijuana, alcohol, or nicotine, none of those supports a positive brain development and a positive future for them. So experimenting early increases the risk for addiction to any of it later. So the answer is they're not, and it's not fair to compare them that way. But cigarette wins the prize. You just can't tell how far the others are behind. Is that fair?
You can tell that Amy's line of work is cigarettes and nicotine.
I am, that's true.
But I would also say that it's important to look, looking at alcohol as well, that as Amy said, we know that kids who use any substance are much more vulnerable to addiction than adults. Their brain keeps developing until age 25, so really, even at 21, age of majority or age of, legal age of purchase for alcohol, they're still, as we know, if we have kids, we know, they still make really boneheaded decisions. So that's kind of how it goes. And--
I made one today.
Tell me to. My day's not over yet, so that's a different--
Amy, have you visited many select boards?
No.
Oh, you haven't?
No. It's been a while. We gave a similar presentation to Swanton--
Two years ago.
Two years ago, on the old data, but we're dipping our toe in the water with you all, and then we're happy to put on our cabin shoes and hit the select boards and--
So then, a follow-up question. What would you hope would come from the Regional Planning Commission, having listened to you, all of you?
Yeah.
Would we just carry it back to the municipalities, or do you want us to do something as a group or as an organization? Well, here's a question for you from us, maybe being a bit naive about it, but do you see areas where in your planning work, some of this might, there's a connection? I see a lot, but-- Okay. In terms of decisions about where things go in your--
So we have a regional plan that captures all the municipal plans, and often they are similar, and sometimes the municipalities model after the region. We actually look for a lot of conformity between the two. So if we can share some of this in our regional plan, it'll filter down to the municipalities.
The regional plan has some of this in there, as far as ad restrictions. It's a really tight regional plan as far as prevention of youth substance use. So some of it is in there, but if you're not, if there's no context where you don't understand it or pay attention to it, it doesn't make any sense. So I think what we're doing tonight is giving you all a context for this information, maybe a little bit more deep understanding of it, so that you can start talking about it. And if it happens that you talk to someone on your select board or trustee or council, and they would like to hear more, we're happy to come. But I think this opens the door for us to also say, now it's time for us to start reaching out to the select boards and trustees.
I think you should also target local planning commissions, because they're right in the right.
Yeah.
And they probably don't even realize the proximity of some of these uses to schools.
We would, we would love to go talk to local planning boards, and really, with, unfortunately, with the cannabis bill now off the wall, now is the time for municipalities and plans to really think about what you may or might not want in your town. So really taking a good, hard look at the opt-in, opt-out clause that may end up in the bill.
So can I suggest--
Yes.
--a follow-up? That you send letters to each of the municipal planning commissions--
Yes.
--to ask for an invite?
Yes, certainly can. See, now it's late at night, and I have to write that down, because I'll never remember that. Nobody has to remember that, because that don't function.
You made your show video?
What's that?
You made your video, you can send them all--
We do have a video, yes.
Well, the state too, it's got most microbreweries in the nation--
It does.
--per capita.
Yeah.
It's also one of the highest in the, I'm sorry, alcoholism too.
Yes.
And another, another point, you talked, okay, cigarettes, you know, I don't know about today's world, but at one time, tobacco was furnished to soldiers free. Is it still done?
No.
Okay.
No, in fact, when Hawaii changed its age to sell tobacco products to 21, the military installment there, which is pretty big, was all for it. It helps create a healthier military if you're not using tobacco products also, so they have not gotten away. And they don't do that anymore.
Your organizations are good at handing out pamphlets and booklets and whatnot.
Yeah.
Do you also have access to signage that you could provide to local communities that if they wanted to put signs up in their park for tobacco alcohol-free, or like I'm the county administrator, if I wanted to put it in our county buildings? Is that something that you make available or point us in the right direction?
Yep, so there's free signage available through the Department of Health, I can help you get that. For the communities that haven't liked those signs, I've purchased those for them, like at Swanton, they design their own for their smoke-free parks, and I purchased them, I think for St. Albans and Edensburg, actually. So yeah, I'm happy to purchase those.
Okay, I'll be contacting you.
Thank you.
Just a thought. The, one of the items that you brought up on your program was parent education.
Yep.
And it seemed kind of minimal on there, but I think that's a major factor in this, is paid parent education.
Parent education is amazing.
Or parent control of the--
Controlling parents is hard.
Yes. Well, I know that's practically impossible, but it seems though, just an oversight, my part, maybe I'm wrong, the parents are, you can't legislate this problem out of, out of the child.
It all has to happen together.
The parent has got to kick in more than the legislature kicks in.
It all has to happen together. So, so one of the things we're doing as far as, you know, the juuling products, is helping parents understand how their kids are accessing and where they're learning about it, that it's, you know, on social media. So giving that information to parents is really important. Schools that send home information saying, these products are not safe, please be aware. And you can do it for, you know, any other product you want. Parents are, I'm a parent, and I'm really hard to reach. I get, you know, I get in, get the milk, get out, right? I'm in, I'm out. I don't take time to absorb a lot of information, especially during the day when I'm at work. But what we can do is make sure parents have the resources, or making sure kids have the skills and the knowledge that they can make healthy decisions by supporting schools and bringing this information to schools, not this information, that information to schools.
Or that the parents are aware of what you're bringing up as far as advertising when they, they take their kids into these places.
I would love more ideas on how to better access parents. They're, it's just a hard group to access, and it's not a low priority, it's a high priority. It's just really hard. Wouldn't you say?
It seems like alcohol work. Sad state, but that is--
If the three-foot tall kids remain aware of what they're facing and what the advertising scheme is, are they less susceptible to it?
Yeah, so we do something called media literacy. We teach kids what ads are, how they're made up, and so they have some skills to understand advertising. But where it gets tricky is social media, where kids are using hashtag, hashtags to talk to one another. It's a great form of advertising that the company doesn't have to control, but that kids are now doing it to one another. So it's really more complicated. You know, when I grew up, when you got, you know, there was newspapers, magazines, and TV ads, and now it's just, it's way more complicated. So yes, you're giving them a protective factor by giving them some skills, but it's hard. Unfortunately, as soon as they hashtag something, the paid advertisements start popping up in the social media feeds. So part of the education of parents is really making parents aware of what their kids are seeing, when they may be thinking something, a simple, you know, Snapchat, they may think that that is the lesser of the evils for social media, but it unfortunately is pulling and targeting advertising.
And a lot of the work that we have to do, and again, it's reaching parents can be challenging. We, you know, we do use social media, we do school community presentations. Challenging to get parents out on a, on a night to listen to our great wisdom, but we do try. But one of, you know, parents being a source, I think that's another, that's a whole other issue and something that we really are attempting to, to change. And also to get parents to talk to one another and feel comfortable having those conversations with their, with their peer group, and becoming as strong a peer group as the kids are, but with that, with protecting their kids from substances in mind. So still a lot of work to do.
We've gone way over your time, and I'm so sorry.
Thank you very much.
Lots of great questions.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming this evening and for giving this information. Certainly, if there are additional questions, I'm sure we can reach you one-on-one as well.
Yeah, and I brought copies of this slide, if anybody cares, and our contact information is there. I'll just leave it on the side table, you can pick it up if you choose.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And I'll just say a big thank you to Ben, this is from next to the last day before retiring. So thank you for everything.
Thank you for lying down.
Next on the agenda are commission reports. I'll go through them, finance and operations, Harold's out--
Harold's out.
Anything that there is reported here, anything you want to bring to our attention, Catherine?
The only thing I'll note is that everything is as we expected it to be at this point in the year, and that the finance committee will be scheduling a meeting in February, sometime to do a mid-year budget, new budget adjustment.
Next, personnel, Joe?
Thank you. Catherine shared with me earlier today that she has gotten back from legal counsel a review of the draft edits to the personnel policy that we had submitted or compiled for council's review, and my sense is that there'll be a personnel committee meeting sooner than later, and we'll keep efforting that, that project.
Thank you. Executive Committee--
Thank you. Executive committee, we did meet. There were two primary topics. One of them is on the agenda for number seven, so I won't spend time on that now. The other is we were continuing to move forward with the establishment of a nonprofit. A tentative name is Northwest Vermont Regional Foundation. We, in our last meeting, reviewed the organizational structure, reviewed proposed bylaws, and those bylaws are currently in legal review. We thought we might bring something to you tonight, but it's still in legal review, so we're targeting to do that sometime at our February meeting. So we do expect to have discussion in our February meeting and to recommend ratification at that meeting as well. One, one topic that I'll float now so you can be thinking about it is, in addition to the proposed bylaws, the organizational structure, we also have been discussing seat money. It's necessary when you have any organization to have a budget to start with. And we likely will recommend that we take some money from power reserves as seat money to support the initial operations of the foundation. So more to come in February, but wanted to give you an update of where we were going with that. And I will put off until we get to agenda item seven, the regional services bylaw amendment. Yes?
If we're going to be asked to ratify this, we will see the bylaws, et cetera, prior to meeting.
Correct. That's, they may even have been ready now, but we want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to get them ahead of time and read them and, and be prepared to discuss them.
And some of the general points that would be in the bylaws are on the update sheet that I put in the pile of papers as we walked in. So if you didn't get that, there is an update.
I appreciate this passing around.
Just pass that around.
Next is project review. I see that Alicia isn't here.
Yeah, she let me know she wasn't, maybe she made it.
Yeah, so I'm vice chair of that committee. I can present for Alicia.
Thank you.
You look to the back end of your packet, it's the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, there's a page that said project review committee monthly business report. It gives a summary of the three projects that were reviewed at the January meeting. The key information is here, specifically that the first project was the McDonald's in Ennisburg where the, they're doing some addition of the sidewalk signage and minor site amendments. And we wanted to take the opportunity to remind them that there is a goal to have sidewalks at that interchange as well as a crosswalk at that interchange to promote a walkable community there. We did find that it was not of substantial regional impact and it is in conformance with the regional plan. Second project is in St. Albans at Franklin Park West. This is an area kind of behind the old battery plant and the Hannaford Shopping Center. It is an industrial park that is going through a variety of ups and downs. It's right now, it seems to have a number of different projects. We reminded the applicant in a letter that we wanted to have sidewalks through there despite the fact that it's not fully built out. And it's not indicated in that, the planning for that. So we said it was not in conformance with the regional plan. However, it's not of a significant substantial regional impact. The third and final project was a farm in Berkshire where they are increasing the amount of fuel distribution that they do from their farm operation after some business activities that they've engaged in. And so they wanted to ensure the work, the development went through Act 250 application. We had no problems with it as far as regional impact or conformance with the regional plan, but we did ask to ensure that the facility had been, is in conformance with the Department of Public Safety's fire safety division standards. And those are the projects that we reviewed at the last meeting.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to ratify the actions of the, question? After a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
To ratify the actions. Second, questions, comments?
Can I, point two.
Sure.
According to your project review policy, since none of the projects are of substantial regional impact, the project review committee report doesn't require board ratification. That doesn't mean you can't do it, but it's not a requirement, so.
Okay. So my question is related to Franklin Park West.
Yes.
This is kind of an ongoing dialogue with them. Each one of these individual projects have a lack of sidewalk. Is, do we have any way of trying to get this resolved as we deal with each one of these? They, they all tend to refuse to do their own little piece, but the whole, the whole development was supposed to have sidewalks from the very beginning, right? Or was it a later act?
So later, later act. I can speak to it if you'd like. So the situation that we find ourselves in with Franklin Park West is that the town of St. Albans has a sidewalk master plan which doesn't call for sidewalks along that particular road, but does have provisions for sidewalks along the para drive to the left and the recreation path connecting from there to the rail trail. But our regional plan, since this is a growth center, calls for complete streets, meaning all the streets should be multimodal. So we have, we have a bit of a conflict there between the two goals. And I think where, where we've left it at this point is that we'll continue to talk and see where we can find agreements of mutual, mutual goals. But for the time being, we have our regional plan and we'll continue to comment in that regard. The town has their plan, they'll comment in their regard. And since they're not projects of substantial regional impact, the town plan will rule in Act 250. If there ever is a project of substantial regional impact, when there's a conflict, the regional plan rules. And so we've kind of just left it as an agree to disagree and long-term thinking, figure out, you know, how we can support the town and their sidewalk efforts and support implementation of our regional plan. There's no easy answer.
It's going to be a point probably where development reaches a tipping point where we hope that the master plan can be implemented with the complete streets. And at that time, it might be that all of the property owners there contribute to the incorporation of sidewalks rather than doing it piecemeal as we're requesting now. But in the end, we hope that we will have what we seek in regional plan there. Just not easy to get it now.
In terms of, from the town of Polchester, from the town of St. Albans, that we have a very difficult political issues there in terms of a very conservative group and people who are the, if you will, more liberal who want sidewalk plans. And after many, many years, we've come up with a sidewalk plan that now we finally have a large agreement to. It basically doesn't cover this park, but it does cover going from the Collins Perolee over to the Hardak area and then from the city up to Route 104 or the Fisher Pond Road. And even with that, that we're now all agreed as a select board on this plan, we still have a lot of feedback from the community saying, too expensive, we don't need it and so forth. And yet, when we look carefully, we see all different ages groups using the pla, parks, the sidewalks that we already have. Ironically, the one that's most used is in the Bay Park where we have put it in the pack. And so we know that once we build them, they will be used. The problem is that the industrial park is way out of the way. We still don't have easy access from the city to Hannafords. That's in the planning room. And so from my point of view, we're wasting a lot of argumentative capital on that small area which is going to develop very slowly while we really need to build community support with the existing plan.
Yeah, and I, and I think it's definitely worth recognizing, number one, we have our regional plan that we will support in terms of complete streets implementation. But to be able to say, St. Albans town has a sidewalk master plan and they're focusing on implementing sidewalks in other parts of the town first is a huge sea change and needs to be recognized for accomplishment that it is.
Other comments, questions? We've got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
Stand.
Hold for a period. Transportation advisory committee did not meet because of weather conditions. Energy committee, Bob Berman?
We did not meet. Let's see, I don't know if I can comment on this or not. In the legislative year, there've been a couple of activities related to carbon tax or been reported out. It's a legislative study or governor's, I can't remember who paid for it. Anyway, so there's a couple of different pushes. So they're, they're pushing the carbon tax again. The report, it's a very interesting report. What we're hearing on the press is how they're talking how it has, no, carbon tax would have no economic impact. But they don't tell you, the report also says carbon tax will not reduce energy usage. But it does say it'll have an improved on the environment because it'll have money to go invest in other places. So careful how you read how the report is getting publicized is my caution. And it's, there's a lot of data in there, but you're going to hear part of the report as opposed to whole, all of the report. Is it biased to this point?
Thank you, Bob. Groundfields committee, Laz?
We did not meet.
Regional plan and policy committee, Lynn?
Lynn turned around on her way here. The committee will plan to meet sometime in March.
Thank you. Vermont Economic Progress Council, Al?
Did not meet last month, is going to meet tomorrow.
Thank you. Vermont Economic Progress Council, look, I already did that one. I probably should put glasses back on.
Bob, you said Bob.
Green Mountain Transit, you may have seen from the press that Green Mountain Transit is struggling to put together their budget for 2020, if you're right, years, right? Over the last number of years, we've kind of been using up funds that have been sitting on the side and we're starting to reach the end of those funds. So doing a lot of investigations on methods of how to reduce costs and implement better routes that are more efficient and kind of go anywhere they can through their financial plan. So you may still hear some more about that. We're going to end up with a budget, it's going to be very tight. We're going to continue to work on it until we spend it.
The whole route review that you guys did that kind of finished up towards the end of last year, is that going to help the efficiency much or is it just going to increase service?
Yes and no. So the, the study itself, the prime, it kind of came through with three versions of recommendations. The first recommendation was a revenue neutral recommendation, which did efficiency of the routes. In some ways, the way they did it by doing some efficiencies, they actually added some routes. So as we go through this analysis, we may go look at that neutral version and see if there's actually some ways that we could save some more that goes with that neutral piece.
Especially in the urban operating areas, there's an estimate of, you know, about $200,000 to $250,000 that could be saved simply by implementing some of those efficiencies.
Yeah. I mean, some of the, some of the, as they did those efficiencies, they added hours beginning in the end. Well, maybe we won't add those hours yet, we'll just do better than some of the middle kinds of things. For, in our region, there was some recommendations to get an extra route to Albert and an extra route to Richford. I anticipate we won't do those extra routes, but we'll do the simplification within the city that will make things better and more adaptable. It's kind of, I think that's the one option we've got for ourselves.
So you won't be adding islands and that?
That, that made it to option number three. It didn't even make it to option number two.
And then it's face three.
I lost, I fought hard for that part.
Yes, you did.
So we weren't, we weren't on the outlook anyway.
But on the positive side, that means you're not on the list of potential cuts either.
Speaking of cuts, are there going to be some routes or shuttles that will be cut?
As of right now, the budget does not include any cuts for fiscal year 20. So if everything goes, if all the assumptions hold true in terms of revenue, cost-cutting measures and additional grants.
And potential rate increases.
And potential rate increases, then there will, then that will hold and we won't have to cut anything at this period.
Thank you. Clean water advisory committee, anything from staff?
Did not.
Office?
I'll go really quick. The RPCs were activated by Vermont Emergency Management during the November, snowstorm at the end of November to assess damages. Are there any damages that occurred to our towns? We didn't really have any. I think it was mostly northeast Kingdom and some in southern Vermont that experienced damages. We were also activated, I guess it was the last, I lost track, it was last week?
That was this was?
Last Friday.
Friday, it was Friday.
Friday, we got activated again for that potential for ice jam flooding, which we didn't get any. We called out all the towns, we didn't have any damages that were reported. All the activity took place down in Rottlin and Brattleboro. So we were spared. One thing you can take back to your communities is that there is a new local emergency management plan template that the state emergency management is requiring. Towns to do, each year, the local emergency plans are due May 1st. They ask for all the plans to come in. There's no statutory requirement for that, but we try to hit that deadline anyway. That's the deadline that they've established. The new template is pretty similar to the old template. I've filled out a couple for St. Albans City and St. Albans Town already. They follow very, very closely with the old format. In that regard, we're having two workshops for the new local emergency management plan develop, one in Grand Isle County on Monday night at 7:00 PM at the Grand Isle Sheriff's Office and the new Grand Isle Sheriff's Office in County Grand Isle. That's the old Nut Free Chocolates building. It's got a really nice facility there now. And then there's one on February 7th at the state police barracks in St. Albans, 10 o'clock in the morning. We're also having a local emergency management director seminar. It's a two-hour abbreviated seminar. This is something that we've heard from the communities, something that they wanted. One's being held on February 7th at Grand Isle Sheriff's Office from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And then there's one on February 18th at the Swan Municipal Office from about 10 o'clock in the morning to noon. And finally, on February 14th, Valentine's Day at 10 o'clock, at the Swan Municipal Complex, the Agency of Natural Resources, National Weather Service, Vermont Emergency Management, V-Trans and Regional Planning, we're doing the spring ice jam flood outlook for this coming spring. And that's it.
So Sean, I think you sent all the dates to the municipalities?
I did send out all the dates to all my email lists. I haven't hit the select boards yet. So I'm going to try to do that tomorrow. So I realized that today that I forgot the select boards.
Oh, no. But all the emergency management directors?
All the emergency management directors and coordinators in the emergency management group that I have, they've all been notified, yes.
Speaking of the flood, spring flood outlook?
Yes.
Lake Champlain is well above its normal height for the state. And I think January was in the top five snowiest winters this year. So besides rivers, I think we should be paying some attention to lake levels come spring. We could have another 2011.
Isn't that a camp on there?
That's your town.
Yeah. Just living on the shore and paying attention to it. And it's remarkable how high the lake is right now compared to where it usually is. It's actually higher now than it was in January of 2011.
Yeah.
That doesn't necessarily follow through. It really is dependent on how much rain and snow melt we get in a hurry in the spring, but.
Right. The, the spring flood outlook's really, it's great to have the National Weather Service there because they have a lot of the forecast models that, that they use and they present upon that they're, you know, fairly good probability of what we can expect.
Do they change them every 24 hours? Like they do a seven-day forecast or?
Al?
To that degree, have you heard anything from the international committee that has looked at and supposedly studying the intervention for remediation of the flooding of the lake as opposed to the regional?
Not since they did this municipal officials meeting in December or November. I can't remember when it was. I haven't heard any new information. I haven't heard any new information, but when I get any, I'll pass it along.
Is there a written report? I couldn't get to that meeting, I went to the first one.
Right.
I couldn't get to the second one.
I haven't seen a written report come out yet.
Yeah, I haven't seen the report. There is a, I know that they did a YouTube video of the, of the meeting itself, but I haven't seen the report yet.
Do you recall if they have any plans to allow the water to flow through the regional at a higher rate?
I do not, and would not hazard a guess on some of that.
So they're able to restrict it?
We can take a look.
Lisa?
Yeah, I can, I'll bring that question though, let's see what I can find.
David probably knows.
All right, we'll call David.
I thought, I thought of this idea way back in the 60s and 70s, that, that any increase in that water rate is going to dry out some marsh areas in New York and Vermont, so that it was something that probably would never...
Yeah, I'll see what I can find out.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Regional Services Bylaw Amendment. So, in, oh, I thought I did that office, but that was the Clean Water.
Oh, I don't really have many updates that we haven't already, because most of the stuff I've been working on, we've already talked about. I'll just say legislative, really, really briefly, that there's a lot of legislation around water quality implementation, and as the session goes on, we'll know a little bit more about what has momentum to move forward, and I can bring that to you. And then there's also a lot of discussion about Act 250, following up on the Act 250 Commission. I had the opportunity to meet with House Energy and Technology last week to present on the energy planning that we've been coordinating statewide with all the municipalities, and that was really well received, they were really pleased to hear all the work that's going on in town on energy planning.
Any questions, Catherine?
On the regional, on the energy and the blockers that we have up here?
Yes, she had.
Yes. I guess I have two questions. One, if we have that much electricity up here, why can't we reduce the rates for this region?
Let me tell you, that I will not know the answers to your questions, however, I am inviting the author of the most recent study to come to our board meeting, hopefully in February, if not in March.
Oh, fantastic.
Yes, so think of your questions, get them ready, all those ones that you hope we have the answer to that we never do, he will.
He'll be able to say he doesn't know.
You're talking to, to me, the other side of the coin is to use electricity would be a fantastic marketing tool to get companies that need a higher electricity component for their operations to locate you.
One of the best ways to solve distribution challenges is to use it.
Right.
I think GMP though is looking for a rate hike, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
They just dropped down a project up in Derby.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a distribution challenge.
Right.
Was that, was that on Green Mountain or on Coop?
Green Mountain.
Yeah, it was Green Mountain. Yeah.
It was so, it was so...
Yeah, I just didn't know whether that was going to fall on the territory.
It didn't fall on the territory. We know we're going to stop them.
So, stay tuned, I think you'll be very happy when he's able to come.
Great, thank you.
Or maybe not with his answers, but you'll be happy to listen.
Thank you. Anything else?
I believe, was it the November meeting, we were going to have somebody come talk to us a little bit about the flood cars? Was it, was that on the agenda at one point?
Maybe from Tac.
Was that just Tac?
That was Tac.
Was that Tac? Okay. Can't solve enough meetings, and I'm kind of confused on what's been on what agenda?
So I'm going to move on to Agenda Item 7, Regional Services Bylaw Amendment. There is a write-up in your packet. Just in summary, in 2016, the legislature approved a law that allows municipalities and towns to enter into services agreements. And, but in order for the Regional Planning Commission to be able to do that, we have to adopt bylaw amendments to promote cooperative arrangements and coordinate, implement, and administer service agreements among municipalities. Doing this does not force a town to participate with us, or force us to provide services, but it does offer the potential for us to improve our services to the region. You can think of lots of potential areas, you know, you see towns have issues with health officers, share zoning, administration services, things like that. This, again, doesn't force us to provide services to the towns, or force towns to participate, but by having this, it's just another tool in our toolbox that would allow us to provide additional services to the, to the region if it makes sense. And so the Executive Committee has reviewed this and recommends that we adopt the changes for our bylaws.
And so this is before you tonight, the full board, the Executive Committee endorsed bringing it to you for discussion and to get concurrence about whether you think this is a good idea. If the board concurs that this is a good idea, then there's the whole bylaw amendment process that would need to happen, where amendments are drafted, they're reviewed by the board, there's a notice period, and then they're adopted by the board. So, this would be the, if you so are so inclined, this would be the go-ahead step to begin the process of a bylaw amendment. And as Kirk said, what this does is it gives us the opportunity to help our municipalities provide the services that are typically local services, but could be done jointly by multiple municipalities to gain efficiencies, or to enable you to actually recruit a person to do that job in some cases. So, that's the tool that it would give us, and it's totally optional.
Do you have any questions?
So, we're really looking for consensus on whether to move forward, because it, the consensus just tells us, yes, go ahead, try and find a bylaw amendment that makes sense that you can bring back to us.
So while we start the conversation, I say I agree and move that we, I can agree to this, and that we ought to as a board move forward on it.
Thank you.
As the first thing said, sorry.
And we may decide, it may become easier for me if we see dissension to actually have a vote, but...
Okay.
Questions? Anybody have questions about what this is?
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
So there's a sample bylaw language in here, this is brought before us as a potential bylaw amendment language?
To give you an idea.
To give you an idea, and the way we've typically handled bylaw amendments in the past is how I would propose we would move forward, which is that an actual real amendment to our bylaws would be drafted, brought before the board at the next meeting, so you'd see the actual language before you authorize the beginning of the bylaw amendment process.
So we have to go through a public hearing process?
Yeah, there's a public notice process and a board notice process, and so this was given to you to show you what it could look like. I didn't take a lot of time to actually amend our bylaws until I, we heard from the board to make sure that this was a direction the board was comfortable with.
So would this enable towns to like, if they were, didn't have a lot of zoning issues that they could share a zoning administrator? Because we're having trouble keeping a part climate.
Yeah, and I think especially with employment, unemployment rates as low as they are, it's, it's a challenge to fill some of those, you know, kind of filler jobs that are more attractive in leader economic times.
How about listers? Presently, they've got to be in the town, if one isn't in the town, they're living.
Mm-hmm.
So would they change that to appraisers?
Yeah, it would have to be a municipality that moved to the assessor model for that one. But those are two great examples. For example, I know there's some towns that have the assessor model, there is a person who has cobbled together multiple communities and they go one day a week, or one day a month into those communities and do the assessor job. Well, that's great, but if that person goes away, there's no guarantee there's the next person who wants to come and do that sort of job. So maybe that's a service that ends up making more sense through compact of municipalities.
So if a town, if three towns share a zoning administrator, would that zoning administrator then be an employee of the RPC?
Yeah, the way that this, this would enable that to happen, and so...
Towns could do it without us.
Yep.
They could also...
But that hasn't happened a whole lot.
Right, they could also look to us to coordinate that for them.
Yeah, so I kind of see it as a concept, it's making it easier for the town to contract an RPC to supply that service for them.
But they would still have say in how the service is run, just like you would in any contractual agreement. The full cost of it, the way the statute is set up, the full cost of that service would have to be paid by the municipalities that were receiving the service. So the other towns not participating would not subsidize the service.
It might be harder to find somebody who's willing to rule on three totally different sets of zoning bylaws than find somebody part-time to do it for a town.
Yeah, you know, years and years ago, we used to have a circuit rider position that actually did a similar job to that, yeah.
Bill?
So in a situation where the NRPC made arrangements for, contracted somebody to work for multiple municipalities, can we be explicit about risk of liabilities? Say that that individual engages in improper or illegal activities, that we are held non-liable, or passes on to the municipality?
I think within the legal structure, we would want to make sure to protect NRPC's interests. I don't know enough of the details about the, the legal structure.
It's highly unlikely for most of these positions, but you could see lawsuits arising. For example, there's shared town health officer, and someone gets it.
Would some of that be covered by the LTC?
Yeah, we do, we do have liability coverage, as do most municipalities, and we would need to make sure that whatever service we provided was covered under our liability policy.
You know, Bill has a good point, because at least in Grand Isle, people seem to like to appeal decisions in zoning administrator all the way to the Supreme Court, so who's paying the...
Right, and so I think what we want to be, great conversation, but this isn't about a zoning administrator, right? It would be one of any services, and zoning administrator might end up being a bad one. But, but it's really just to have it as a tool so we can have these discussions if we see a need in the, in the region.
And as part of negotiating any service agreement for this service, those sorts of questions would need to be asked, answered, and decided upon in advance, because you want to know the answer before something like that happens.
So what we're talking about here is like support services, is what we're...
Yep.
CY, it seems to suggest that there are other services, it mentions infrastructure, community development, joint purchasing, intermunicipal, and then intermunicipal services. So would that be something that you would be including in your, in your rewrite of the bylaws, specifically infrastructure and infrastructure-related purchasing?
It would be my recommendation that if you're going to amend the bylaws, that you keep it broad and enabling, and then any individual request would be something the board and the municipalities would have to weigh as to whether it's appropriate. So, yes.
I look at this as an enabling tool, doesn't mean we have to actually use it for anything and everything, right? We can be quite selective in what makes sense.
I was thinking of it, the items being able to, for instance, share recontrol.
Yeah, reharness, yeah.
And just, can we build into these sorts of agreements if it were countering the bylaws means to recapture costs to NRPC for administering their municipal activities? Because it seems like you could actually get to a point where you might have staff engaging, you know, several hours a month or something like that, even with some of these.
So the full cost of providing the service has to be paid for by those receiving?
So almost like that, you'd have to...
Yeah, and that's actually in the law, so, yes, we would, absolutely.
Other comments, questions?
It sounds as though it would be a worthy project if we're talking about, do we continue with it or...
I would piggyback onto what you said earlier, Kirk, try to keep it as, as broad as you can in the discussion purposes, because it might be a useful tool as the state puts more mandates on us, where it could be handled better through a joint venture than individual towns, whether it's something along the MS4 projects, or Stormwater Utilities, or anything like that. We don't know what the legislature is going to put on us in the future. So if we can keep it broader, I'd appreciate it.
Stormwater, as Bob was saying, is a really good example of something.
That's probably the best example.
And that could be happening.
Given all the comments, should we have a vote as...
So I think I actually have a motion, then a second for a vote. So, if there's no other comments, all those in favor of moving forward with this concept and bringing back a bylaw amendment to be reviewed, to take through the process, I think that's what that...
Yeah, correct.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Local and Regional Disaster Recovery Team.
I'll try to keep it short tonight. It was just a little bit over a year ago that the Mississippi River ice jam flood event occurred, around 14, 14. It happened up in Swampville, Swanton Town, Highgate, probably a lot of you were in the room were involved with it. The first responders, the first responders did a fantastic job, the communities did a great job coming together and helping people that were affected by the flooding. Approximately 31 homes, I think, were, were damaged. Local shelter was opened up at MDU for displaced residents. We had the EOC opened up at the Swamp Municipal Complex. RPC staff went up, myself, Catherine went up, and Alyssa Henry, our old AmeriCorps person, went up to help support the Emergency Operations Center as much as possible, just to provide staff for the community to deal with the initial response. The first week after the flooding had occurred after the initial response, a decision was made, I think it was through AHS maybe, or the Red Cross, to open up a multi-agency resource center at the Swampville Municipal Complex. This was the first time this was down in the state of Vermont. This is a model that FEMA likes to use down in Louisiana and some of the southern states. The Mark is meant to be a one-stop shop for individuals and families who are affected by flooding or other disasters, a place where they can go and find resources that are available to them locally, regionally, by county, that could help them recover from flooding. We had CDO, EOs there, offering water and a lot of, they had a lot of information they were handing out on fuel assistance, and with extra funding that they had for helping folks purchase furnaces, hot water heaters. The Division of Fire Safety was there, talking to people about when it was safe to re-enter their homes, and handing out, I think they were handing out smoke detectors and information on carbon monoxide poisoning. The American Red Cross was meeting people at the door, they were serving as case managers for people that were, that had to evacuate their homes in the middle of the night. Most of, a lot of the people just had whatever, you know, they left their homes with, just the clothes on their back. So the Red Cross was handing out vouchers for hotels, where they could get, you know, places to stay for the night. They had gas cards, I think some food cards, maybe some store cards, where the folks could go get clothing, like at Walmart. Northwest Counseling and Support Services had a station at the Mark, and they were offering mental health services for people who were experiencing some trauma. Champlain Housing Trust was there for some, talking to people about housing assistance and dealing with their damages. We had our Medical Reserve Corps and Health Department was there handing out water kits and taking, doing wellness checks for, for people who had flooded in the middle of the night and were experiencing a little bit of shock and awe from the flooding. Overall, I think it went, the Mark was a really... Overall, I think it went, the Mark was a really great, it was a really great concept. I forgot to mention also Catherine and I were there. The municipalities asked us to sit in. They were busy doing, still, you know, dealing with flooding issues and also trying to conduct day-to-day business for the communities. So Catherine and I were there trying to answer questions, and we would call people within the, you know, like we call here, the Hardaway Department or whoever, whenever any questions that came up. So a lot of the people, they would come to our table and they were looking for assistance with getting some sand from the town's sand supplies so that they could access their homes. Their driveways were covered in ice, they had no way into their place, or they were looking for gravel to, maybe they could get from the town to try to help rebuild their driveways. Am I forgetting any? I mean, the list probably went on and on, and I don't know, Neil, if you remember, any other requests that came through, if you were, I don't know if you were part of that or not. I can't remember.
Yeah, I got on the side, I wasn't in the main room like...
I think it was Red, yeah, I think it was mostly Red was handling it.
I was down at the sewer pump station on that...
Yeah, that's right.
...flooded.
Yeah, I can't remember who was all involved with it. Go ahead, Bob.
So out of the percentage of places that got flooded, how many came through this process, do you know? Was it almost everybody?
I'm trying to recall. I don't remember because we were, you know, there were a lot of people that were coming in, and I don't know from the Red Cross perspective, they didn't give us like an exact number.
It was more than just a few, like?
Yeah, it was definitely a few. It was a steady stream all day from Friday, from Friday from eight to four, and again, from Saturday, I think from eight, I think it was eight to four on Saturday as well. I do, you know, people were working during the day, we had more of an influx around four o'clock at night. Probably should have had it opened up a little bit longer till six or seven. First time it was done, you know, it's kind of learning as we move along.
Yeah.
Yeah. One thing we did learn about was a program that's available to individuals and families is the Vermont Long-Term Recovery Fund. This was established during Irene Recovery Efforts, where people wanted to donate money to Irene Flood Relief, and they offer up to $10,000 in funding for individuals and families. Mostly their focus is working on getting people furnaces, hot water heaters, washer dryers, refrigerators, mostly appliances. And with the Vermont Long-Term Recovery Fund, case managers were assigned by the Vermont Long-Term Recovery Committee, which is a nonprofit organization. Chris Campini, I believe, chairs of Vermont from the Southern Windsor, Wyndham, excuse me, Wyndham Regional Television, chairs of the committee. The case managers are assigned by the committee to work with individuals and families to kind of itemize their damages, damage amounts. Applications are pulled together, receipts are pulled together, they're handed to the Long-Term Recovery Committee for review. The Long-Term Recovery Committee is made up of individuals within the community, usually town staff, local fire, rescue, town clerk, treasurer, RPCs, anybody else. If you were there for the Swanton Long-Term Recovery Committee or any other organization that wants to be on the committee with the approval of whoever the EMD is of that community.
Got a question here?
Sure.
Are those funds grants or loans?
Those are donations. The money is donated and it's, I believe it was a loan that was given out to the individuals. I think that they had to, I think the individuals went out and they purchased the items themselves, and then the loan covered, they had to show receipts, and then the loans covered the, or the grants covered it, whatever their costs were.
But they don't have to pay it back?
They don't have to pay it back, but they did have to include it when they filed their taxes that year. So the Long-Term Recovery Fund was, you know, a huge boost for individuals. It was a really long process. Alyssa, again, that worked for us, was case manager supporting the Long-Term Recovery Committee and worked with some of the case managers, trying to help individuals out, and it was a really long, it took months and months to pull together the applications to give to the Long-Term Recovery Committee. It was a huge learning process for everybody. During last fall, I think, summer, maybe, maybe it was the end of the summer, we had an after-action review with the Vermont Emergency Management, came down and facilitated, gave up an after-action report to look at what the strengths and weaknesses were of the response and recovery efforts for the three communities. These are some of the things that we found out, was that the Long-Term Recovery Committee played a crucial role in managing local recovery efforts. The Long-Term Recovery Committee was made up of the village manager, the EMD, fire chief, RPC staff, the treasurers, select board members, trustee members. They were responsible for the weekly check-in on residents. They could receive a ton of calls from families trying to get assistance. They needed, you know, a lot of families needed to muck out their homes, they needed to get rid of all the debris that, you know, sheet rock, couches, furniture, you name it. They needed help with getting that stuff off their property. Now, these are the people who don't have a lot of extra money to spare necessarily, they're the ones that need to get assistance. And what we discovered in the after-action, one of the findings was that there are very few resources available to municipal officials throughout the state, really, to assist with planning for disaster recovery. We kind of were figuring it out as we were going along. There were a lot of state agencies and organizations that had some information, but they weren't necessarily forthcoming with it. We had to kind of dig and dig until we got the answers that we needed. There was no like template, there was no emergency plan, you know, there was no plan or anything that we had to go by. We kind of figured it out as we went along. And there were a lot of local agencies that were willing to assist. We had, like I said, Northwest Counseling and Support Services, we had the Northwest Solid Waste District. CBOEO was great, but we didn't have any kind of coordinated way to help people and to help the communities. So this year, under our emergency management planning grant funding that we get every year to do like the local EOPs and to help the communities out during disasters, we put in for a special project to develop a recovery annex for local emergency management plans that we're working on, using the lessons learned from the after-action report. And we hope to have like a guide for the Long-Term Recovery Committee formation, you know, who should be on it, what their tasks are. Also, kind of a template for establishing a multi-agency resource center, because it was such a great idea. And what we really want to emphasize is that it's, you know, disaster starts at home and ends at home, and you really want to control this thing as much as possible from the beginning. We found that there were a lot of agencies from out of state and from within state, a lot of volunteer organizations that wanted to come in and kind of run the show for the communities, and you don't want that. You don't want to go through that. If you can set up a committee ahead of time to try to avoid that as much as possible and keep local control, the people that are affected are the people within your community and the people that you know. Go ahead.
I don't want to jump in here.
No, go ahead, Sean.
But you hit it right on the head. There was no ego problems in that whole thing. That worked beautiful for a first disaster process like this. Everybody came together and everybody, and there was a lot, of course, it didn't hurt that the village manager was the emergency management.
That's right.
Coordinator for this district, but everybody came together and worked together, and it wasn't me over you. You know, you say you get the outsiders, and they're going to be at the top of the heap.
We saw it firsthand, for sure, yeah. Right, and even when they're asked not to come back, they still came back. So you really want to get ahead of it and, you know, establish that committee, and the committee is recognized, was really recognized by the state. I think that they took, a lot of the state agencies, once we told them that we had established the Long-Term Recovery Committee, and they're like, okay, boom, now we know who to work with, because before they were just dealing, you know, they're just like calling numbers on a list, trying to figure out who it is that they should be dealing with from within the community. And so the other idea that we had was to develop, now this is FEMA speak, and this is a FEMA thing, but it's called a community organization active in disaster, a COED. This is something that's done in a lot of the other bigger states with bigger populations, big county governments, big emergency county, you know, they have emergency county agencies. See them a lot, like, I guess it was before, like Louisiana and Florida, a COED. And it's public, private, nonprofit organizations and agencies that can assist communities in recovery efforts. So we have all that here already. One of the things that we were thinking we were doing with, instead of creating something new and developing a COED, we thought we would work with our regional partnership and kind of identify some of the organizations that are already in the region that we could start to form sort of a disaster recovery type, not necessarily a committee, but just some operations, kind of have some guidelines. What we want to come up with is like a resource template, have like communities, if they need help figuring out who they need to call for housing assistance, who the emergency number for housing assistance, they'll have the number, who can we call, the Solid Waste District, you know, we've got it for, you know, in an emergency, if we've got a ton of debris that we need to bring to the landfill or work with the local garbage company or whatever. These were all numbers that we were having a hard time finding or finding the right people to help us out. So I think if, you know, we have the United Way Resource Guide, and I think a lot of that information is already contained within it, so it's just kind of picking it apart and figuring out who should be on that, that kind of like that recovery committee within the region. And I think that that would be the way to go, rather than reinvent the wheel and form something completely different. I think we can do it with a series of meetings through the regional partnership. I think maybe meet every quarter, maybe every couple of months, talk about what everybody's role would be in a disaster and helping communities out. Swanton and Highgate were really lucky, they had staff on hand. They had, Swanton had, Swanton Village had Reg Beliveau, who was on the fire chief, he's been the fire chief, he's run the hazmat team, worked for IBM on hazmat response. So they had really capable people of helping out in a disaster. There are some smaller communities that don't have staff and are going to need a lot of help, and the people are going to need a lot of help, and they may, they just probably won't know what to do. Like I said, recovery is kind of a new area that the state's working with. For the first time, they're going to be exercising a recovery effort during the catastrophic, statewide catastrophic exercise that's scheduled for later this year. It's the first time they're going to have a recovery piece and actually exercise that. So it's kind of a new, kind of a new idea that we haven't really, we've done a lot of exercises on doing initial response and doing mitigation, and, you know, we do active shooter exercises, but it's that long-term recovery piece that we haven't been really good at planning for or exercising for. So I guess my, our question to you is, does this make sense to use the regional partnership that we meet with anyway regularly once a month? Use that kind of as the vehicle to develop sort of a recovery, like a regional recovery committee, or are there other groups that should be, you know, that you can think of that should be involved with it? You know, just throw that out, I guess. Catherine, you have anything to add?
Just reiterate the question. We don't want to reinvent something new. We thought we could use existing, leverage existing groups, existing partnerships, existing coalitions, unless you as a board think we really need to develop something new. And then we can work to do that. Otherwise, we'll move forward in this and just build a cadre of educated, ready-to-go individuals and organizations who are there to help with recovery.
So local emergency planning, do you need involvement?
They could be, yeah, they could be pulled in.
Because this would be the extension of what they do. They plan to respond, but they also need plan to recover after the disaster.
Yeah, in our region, the LEPCs, they could be. I think the mutual aid, mutual aid organizations might be, might be a better fit, but I think the LEPCs certainly could be pulled into it.
Yeah, pulled in.
Yeah, they'll definitely be pulled into the conversation, into the mix. A lot of the, again, we don't have the capacity to create something entirely new, and the LEPC members are probably going to be the same peoples that would be on, the same individuals that are going to be on the recovery committee. It'd probably be the same individuals. I can't, you know, just we don't, we don't have the numbers for the organizations.
I guess it makes sense, because this, to me, I see it, you're like the chapter two of emergency management. This is like, okay, done the first part.
Right.
Here's the second part.
Right.
As you said, all these exist, so if you don't have the second chapter, all those ones that exist are going to step in and try to do it anyway. This is really just forcing us all to work together and having a structure in place instead of trying to invent it as you're going along.
Right. Now, Reg and I have, Reg Beliveau, the village manager, who was the incident commander for most of, most of the Swanton Village and Swanton Town, response and recovery efforts during the ice jam. Reg and I have talked extensively about this, thinking that we would want to go out and kind of do a dog and pony show for communities and talk about, you know, the importance of trying to get EMDs more actively involved. And we're trying to think of a way where we can get what we've learned from this ice jam incident, how we can bring that to other communities. Like Bartley was saying, the lake is, the snow levels on the lake are high. I could see like the island towns really benefiting from having some game plan to go with if the lake floods again, like what we went through in 2011. Beyond that, you know, I can't imagine what the other big catastrophic event could be, and, you know, an earthquake, maybe, I don't know, we've never really had them, but who knows?
Generally, we don't need that second chapter, but what we can do is try to...
Right. I think if we had those tools, I think, and I say we, I mean like the Swanton Town Village and Highgate Town, if we had those tools, if we knew, if we had a template to work from for this recovery piece and helping individuals and families, that, you know, we could have got, we could have been a lot more efficient, how we spent our time, rather than chasing our trails, trying to figure out how to do a lot of the things. And I think maybe some of the people might have gotten assistance quicker, you know, I don't know for sure, but Monday morning quarterback it all.
We kind of went through the same thing with the ice storm, right?
Correct.
I mean, the islands were out of power for a week. It took a long, part of our problem was, what do you do with all the brushes? You cut it down. We didn't have anywhere to dump stuff, so we were struggling where to take things. I mean, if you had this, again, this further recovery, if you open up the road, now you have dump truck loads of things you got to get rid of.
Right. I mean, if we could have had a number of, and I'm just using this as an example, not that this happened, but like call the Solid Waste District, say, hey, you know, we've got 30 families, they're mucking out their basements over the next three weekends, can you waive the fee or give them a reduced rate or use, try to find some fund that could be, that was the other thing. Funding was another thing for helping individuals and families. Now, I think it's really incumbent upon the communities, you know, you want to help the people that are within your community that are affected by a disaster. I mean, you know, the leadership has a role in doing that, I think, personally. So, you know, if there's unmet needs, like funding was a big thing, a lot of people wanted to donate money to the flood victims, but they didn't want to give it to the Red Cross. And said, well, do we have another mechanism to do that? Well, the village or the town could have started a 501(c)(3), I think, and started receiving donations that way. One of the things I talked to Catherine about, if we do this, this foundation that we're talking about, maybe, you know, money that people want to donate could go into the, you know, this is, I'm just throwing things out here, but maybe the money that people want to donate, they don't necessarily want it to go to the Red Cross, they want to make sure it goes to the flood victims. Maybe by having this fund, money can get channeled there. But that was a big problem early on, was where do we send the money? We also thought like we would call Vermont 211, like, you know, and they would be on it, and we could give them a ton of information, and they would be set up to help us out, but that wasn't the case at all. We had, it took a few days for us to figure out what, you know, what we needed to do to make sure that people had one number that they could call to get information from the towns, and where they could go to get food, where they could go to get clothing, you know, where they could go to get whatever while they're trying to get back to their homes.
So are we looking for a particular action here?
No, I don't need an action. I was just, I just wanted a discussion of what we were doing with this particular project that we just got funding for, and to see if there were, if the board was in agreement, if I'm going down the right rabbit hole in regards to trying to form... hole in regards to trying to form some sort of recovery, long-term recovery committee for a community, I guess, not a recovery committee, but like a region. Thank you.
Kind of have some regional support for recovery efforts in the region.
Sean, just as a survivor of community of a disaster, I can't say enough, I know what you guys did and I can't see any reason for changing that. You might need a little tweaking, but you guys were right there and the state agencies were right there and I think we had a command post where all the right people came at the right time. And like what Bob was saying with the ice storm, it was kind of a hodgepodge, I remember that too, when we were over in the islands cutting trees and trying to put lines up over there, but of course, this disaster was more local, but everybody came together really fine and had a lot of community members, which helps, they want to help each other and help your own community, but I think it would work the same way in the region. I mean, Swanton would be helping Highgate or Richford or whatever.
Right, I think like, yeah, I think the communities all worked really well together.
You don't need more national help.
Right, and there were some organizations.
Maybe fun if they come through with funding in most springs.
Right, and like I said, you have some of the other organizations, they're great, they did a lot of, they don't do a lot of great work, but it's just getting everybody in line to work under your structure.
So it sounds like a really good thing to do, I would recommend that you also link up with the state because they are creating a recovery unit that is focused on this and they might be able to take what you folks did with this MARK and use it as a model, they might be able to support your broadening what you did in Swanton for the whole region.
Right, right, and it's why I'm just thinking that the recovery piece, the recovery unit too, is new from a safety perspective as well.
But they've got people assigned to it.
Yeah. Right, the state did just release their new operations, statewide emergency operations plan was just adopted at the beginning of the year, it was just released, so I haven't looked at it, they definitely won't do that.
So again, I was just wondering if there was an action and you said no, but then you said you're looking for support, so support's an action. I don't know where, right, it's almost like we're having a discussion of every possible scenario, so I don't, I don't know, what's the next step?
Next step is, I think, Vermont, I've heard it's general consensus for support for this direction and I'm happy to hear comments and be back to the board as we move along.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is commissioner announcements. Any announcements?
Yes. I had dinner with David Forthrick Leslie on Sunday, he gives his best to everybody. Wish he could be here too, but he's doing great at Lake Robben.
Thanks for letting us know. I will give a quick update on the 104A Bridge because we've talked about that several times. There was a meeting in Georgia at the fire station this week where the state came in and talked about the leading proposal, the one that they're moving forward with. They are going to replace the bridge, they're going to go out for contract by the fall of this year with the intention to do the construction in the summer of 2020 during the school break and they expect that the road will be shut down for 45 days, which really, for that size of a project, 45 days is probably a reasonable length of time. They asked, they answered a lot of good questions, they agreed to take a look at the temporary one-way lighting arrangement there now because it's kind of the same all the time and so I know that's a frustrating.
You're talking about smart light?
What's that?
A smart light, it's red, there's nobody there.
There's nobody there for, and that happens whether it's eight o'clock in the morning or eight o'clock at night or whatever.
It seems pretty smart, it always turns red, just as I do.
That's because we call ahead Catherine.
So I, you know, I think it seems like a long time to wait until 2020 to have to put up with a one-way bridge. That I think is a lot harder to put up with than the 45-day closure, honestly.
If they get it done in 45 days, that's going to be a pretty good shot.
And they said that, which I was surprised with, when they do these types of closures, they put the contract out in a way that there's a significant incentive to meet the timeline and they're at like 100% meeting the timeline based on doing that.
Yeah, there's a monetary incentive to get, it's the less these, the better the money.
It's basically a little bit, it's a little bit. Yes.
And you open it up for a 24-hour truck repair every week.
Yes, so anyway, that's an update on that, I'll bring back if I hear more as well. I know the people from Fairfax are very interested, the people from Georgia are very interested.
Just some experience, I mean, make sure they give you a wide enough bridge.
So they are, it is going to be a wider bridge, certainly, it's going to have walking width, whatever that is on each side of the road.
Eleven, it'll be.
So it'll be the 11 plus three, so much, much better than what's there now from a width perspective. The real goal, so they can get it done in this time, is to keep it within the right of way, so it can't really be any wider than that. If they have to go outside of the right of way, the process gets really long, so.
I see kids fishing off the edge of that bridge with the semis coming through, it's terrifying.
Yeah, this would be a nice fix.
Yes. Any other announcements? If not, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Have a nice evening.